Welcome to night two of the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop, TV 79. We're ready to go. And we will start this evening with our reviews under General Government with the Board of Selectmen Budget.
Okay, I want to just kind of start with one blanket piece of information. As you go through the budget, when you see the salary accounts, if it is a non-represented employee, we budget them at their current salary and the number of payrolls in the upcoming fiscal year. So in fiscal '21, we have 26.1 pay periods. In fiscal '20, we had 26.2. But we're required to accrue the expenses to the period in which the expenses incurred, so we budget for the exact amount. If it's a union employee, they're budgeted at the grade and step that they will be at on July 1st according to their existing contract. Okay? The Public Works Union, their contract expires on June 30th, so they still will be put, if they're getting a step on July 1st, we recognize that. But we reserve an amount in the salary contingency line for the estimated settlement. We also reserve in that same account any increases for non-represented employees. The last thing is that elected officials' salaries are set in advance for their term. If we had an election this fall, you would be looking at everybody but the first selectmen's salary. The first selectmen's salary is set by the Board of Finance. But without the elections this fall, those are all set. So they're budgeted at what their wage increase will be next fiscal year based on when their term started. Okay?
Thank you.
Jen handed out year-to-date budget reports. By charter, we're required to give you a report that shows you the 12-month expenditures. But I would caution you, do not look at that report, take the six months expenditures and double it. Because not every account is uniformly spent evenly. Some are fully expended in the first few months and some don't get spent until the last few months.
So you didn't mean take the six months and double it?
Don't take the six months and double it.
Do not.
Do not. Did I say it the wrong way?
No, no, no. Maybe you said "do," I thought "no."
No, do not. Okay?
That makes sense.
Yep. All right.
Okay. I guess I also would like to just say again that no question is too small or insignificant to ask. So it's better to ask along the way if you need clarifications. You know, asking for the detail behind something, that's why Jen has her computer open to give us the notes on anything that you might want to know behind the numbers.
Okay. So the numbers for the Board of Selectmen Budget start on tab 1, page 11. And so as I said, the salary for the first selectmen is set for the term. There's also one non-represented employee in that full-time salary line. They're really, the only significant increase in this budget is, I think I put it in the wrong line item.
In software maintenance and support.
Right, I think I made a mistake in putting, it should be in professional services. Can you look, is that where for the intern?
It's gotta be.
It's gotta be the intern.
It's definitely the intern.
Do you want to flip those?
Okay.
$16,500?
Yes.
So that moves up to the...
That moves up to the professional services line.
Okay, all right.
So that's $16,276,700.
Right, so...
So could you just read what you would like in line 11?
In professional services, we're going to, it's going to be $30,721.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Which line, professional services should be increased by $16,500 and software maintenance and support should be decreased by $16,500.
Okay, I'm sorry, so what, so it'll be $1,200.
So line 11 will go to $30,721.
Okay.
And line 12 will go to $1,200.
So no change in software maintenance and support?
Correct.
Okay.
So what I'm doing here...
And the explanation is?
The explanation is, Yukon has an intern program, graduate student intern program, students who are getting masters in public administration. And I think the town should take advantage of that program. It costs $16,500. We're not guaranteed to get an intern, but what I have submitted as our, what we would like to have them do is to study the downtown parking and assist us with ways to improve it, ways to manage it.
I think that sounds fantastic.
I think, you know, we can get a high-level employee for a few months and not have to pay the cost of a real employee.
Will this individual be somebody who is studying for urban planning or...
I would assume yes, that we're, you know, they're not going to be, it's somebody within the MPA program.
Okay.
Sorry, so still on the same topic?
Yep.
You've applied?
We have submitted our interest.
Okay.
So we have, you know, we're not committed to it. So if the funding doesn't come through, then we're not obligated.
Okay.
But I believe there's also the chance that should we get the funding and, you know, put in a full application, that we may not be able to get, if they don't have enough people. You know, there's a chance that they may turn us down.
Okay, and then we would just have the $16,500?
Yes, yes.
Available for next time?
Or, well, not for next time. It would go back, you know, it would be unspent.
Unspent, fair enough.
What's the timing, Kate, of the application process and...
I'll have to check on that, but I believe it's April.
We apply in April?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, last but not least, do we get to interview or is this just a person assigned to? Because you have a very specific idea as to what this individual would do.
Yes.
So do you have discretion as to the candidate?
That's a good question. I will...
Okay, just because it's...
And it's specific urban planning.
Right, exactly. Does he, do they have someone who really meets the needs?
Yeah, because $16,500, you know, you have to look at it, we've done a number of parking studies. So look at it in relation to what we would spend on consultant services.
Exactly.
I like the idea of having an intern as long as we can be pretty well assured that we're going to get a reasonable product.
Somebody who has experience, expertise, or is studying the area that we want.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's...
Yeah.
Is it a three-month program or what?
Shoot, I did not prepare for this one. I'll have to, I will have to research that and get back.
Okay. I would like to say that we will again follow my rules for Board of Selectmen budget discussions where the board will discuss the budget and then once we're done with, you know, a cost center, I'll open it up to questions from the folks that are here joining us. Okay.
Okay. Other than that, there really isn't anything significant.
One other question was under item 20 of revenues. It went up by $20,000, what's the other operating transfer?
Those are miscellaneous state grants? Or the other operating transfer?
Yeah.
I think line 20.
Operating transfer, other fund.
It's either parking or...
That's the police, the administrative fees from the police extra-duty fund. And they have been having a lot more activity in the fund, so the administrative fees are, we're collecting more administrative fees.
Administrative fees from...
So when somebody does private duty, whenever somebody pays us for private duty, we charge an administrative fee to recoup the cost of our having to bill, all that sort of things. So this is, that money's returned to the general fund to offset the costs that the general fund is incurring.
Okay.
It's a good practice because, you know, extra duty is for the benefit of entities that are not the town. But yet we're doing a lot of operational work behind the scenes to facilitate the payments.
I think, I just... What's that? Something got out of line on that page. No, seriously, because you see, there's nothing next to travel.
Are we talking about the Board of Selectmen expenditures, page 11?
Yeah, I think, I think that I didn't make a mistake in the account. Because the dues and professional licenses is the number below.
It got out of line in the production.
Okay, so can you issue us a new page 11, please?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Should travel be $3,000, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it, so yes. So we're actually missing a line then?
Hmm, I'm not even going to attempt to...
Yeah.
We're going to get a new page.
Okay.
May I ask a question back on Kip's point, that you're now proposing 80 versus the 60 on...
Yes.
May I ask, what is it that, I understand you say the revenue that it's, how do you know you're going to get that much more next year? Maybe that's where, if you had 60 last year, how do you know you're going to get 20 more next year?
Because we actually, we budgeted 60 this year. What we've actually gotten in the past years, if you look at the history, we've gotten more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we're basing it on...
Actuals.
Actuals.
And you could also make some assumptions about the work that's going on in town and, you know, the volume of extra-duty jobs with utility work and construction work, et cetera.
Okay, then stay on, thank you, of course. Do you think you're too conservative there? I mean, are you still good with...
I'd rather be conservative.
Okay.
But if you look, you know, '18, '19 appears to be a bit of an aberration.
True. I just didn't know if that was a trend or, no, I didn't know.
Hard to see a trend we don't see before 2016.
You know, we can go back and take a second look at it, but I do prefer to be conservative.
Okay. That's probably a good time, Kate, to talk to the board about revenues and revenue assumptions in general, that, you know, we look at revenues and we look, we look at revenues in relation to the policies that the Board of Selectmen sets. Revenue adjustments are really, unless there's something that's blatant that we would recommend adjusting, are really adjustments that are made at the Board of Finance level. Is that an accurate way to express that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Then, okay.
We'll leave that.
All right. So if you want to go look at, next up is the Town Administrative Budget.
Oh, sorry, yes, Board of Selectmen Budget. Anybody visiting from the Board of Finance or Finance and Budget have questions? Jack?
As a follow-up to what Mark did, assuming that they typically graduate in May or school's over and they have a three-month, would that then would create an adjustment here and potentially something out of the Board of Finance contingency for the coming fiscal year?
She covered before the fiscal year.
She covered before the, you know what? If we take a break at all tonight, I'll go down and get the information from my office. I don't have access to my email here, but I can get the full information.
Okay, I mean, it's not significant.
And if not tonight, tomorrow.
Why not for you?
Yeah.
So sometimes college interns don't follow a summer intern schedule. Sometimes they're placed as a kind of a work program during the college year. So we'll look forward to more information.
I know, I assumed it was the...
Okay.
Okay. In the first section of the Town Administrative Budget on page 14, full-time salary represents myself and a portion of an administrative assistant that I share with the Human Resources Department. Professional services... No, Jenna, can you look at my professional services plan?
Yep.
I don't remember. Oh, yeah. I want to bring in Qsend, which is the company that managed, they're the software company behind our website, and we need to bring them in to do some training for employees to better utilize our website. Sometimes if you go look at it, we're not uniform in fonts we use, we're not uniform in style we use. We've come up against people wanting, you know, we have a meeting calendar, but people want to put town events on a calendar out there. So we need training in how to use some of these things. And then we just have a lot of departments where they're not, they never got training when we first moved to this platform, and they're not well-versed in putting documents up on the web. And our staff helps out where they can because, you know, Linda's really pretty sharp with that. But we need to be training those departments because we shouldn't be the trainer in our office. So that's the increase is so that we can bring Qsend in to train people.
We have a decentralized website management system. We don't have a technical webmaster that would aggregate information and update the website. So each department does that on their own. In certain circumstances, Jeff Adams from IT will help us out with some things, but this is how we manage it in town.
How long is this website platform?
You know, we've used Qsend, I think, since we developed the website. We did a major revamping of it, maybe about six or seven years ago, it was while Carl was here.
So six or seven years is when it came ago, when it came in, or was that the revamping?
That was the revamping.
Okay.
And really updating it. And that's when some people were initially trained. And so we haven't had any serious training on it since then.
Okay, and training is not part of any contract?
No, no. We have like a library that you can go do and do some things on your own.
Yeah.
But some of it's, you really do need to have the trainer come in, sit in a class, and learn how to do it.
And Jen, you said that's $3,600 of the $5,600?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I talked with George, you're going to need a lot more money to teach me how to use the iPad. You'll need a lot more money than that.
Okay. Oh, I know, we still need that. Get to George. There are some issues, he's going to work out for us. I was going to follow him today, don't worry.
Does the Darien Library have any classes on using iPads?
Using iPads?
Yeah.
Yes, you can make an appointment with someone to do it.
There you go.
We'd be happy to do something.
And George is willing to meet with you at any time, except for next week, he will be on vacation. But he's also available by phone.
On the chairlift?
Yes, on the chairlift. He says that he doesn't, you know, he'll be awake on Eastern Coast time, but not start skiing till West Coast time, so.
Oh, gosh. Does he want to try, I mean, I don't want to go, does he want to try to meet with all of us or...
Well, he and I talked about that. I said, you know, which would be, which do you think would be better? He's open to either. I'd be concerned that, I'm not sure that a classroom setting kind of thing works well for everybody. You know, you might need individualized attention, so I think it'd be better for him to try and meet with each person.
That's fine, I'll reach out to him individually. I'll give you my hours. I'll say, I might need to sit in with him.
I was going to say, sometimes there's value in us hearing each other's questions, so.
Absolutely.
I'd consider a classroom environment.
Okay, we'll go.
Okay.
Okay, so on...
I'd love it if that was closed off for the rest of the...
I don't know.
I don't think they're paying Channel 79 for that one.
I guess it would be a quorum.
Yeah, funny.
On page 16, we have the second half of...
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, sorry.
So where are the fees for the Channel 79 operators?
Well, page 16.
Is it on page 16?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, here it is, yeah, okay.
The full-time salary is our parking administrator.
Okay.
And if you're looking at that and saying, that doesn't look like a full-time salary, that's because the majority of her salary is paid out of the parking fund.
Okay.
But she also serves as the town hall receptionist, so a portion of her salary is charged to the general fund budget. And this is where you see the general fund's share of the administrative parking costs. And there's really not much of an increase, we're actually staying pretty level. Our copy releases are a little bit less than we had budgeted previously. And...
TB 79 is due to the pay increase.
TB 79 is the increase that you approved previously.
And operating supplies.
And operating supplies.
What's that for?
Yeah.
Jen? That is also, Channel 79...
Is it new equipment?
The 119. Isn't that working a little slow in here? Take a note for our IT. A new hard drive recorder to be used in tandem with new server-based equipment for Channel 79, $3,000.
So, I'm sorry, that was in...
In the operating supplies?
17?
Yeah, the increase in that is for the hard drive.
Can I, can we go back for one quick? The variance downward for the parking tickets, we're predicting less parking ticket?
Yes, based on what I was seeing in the revenue so far this year.
People are being better about using their...
I'm not so sure, you know, it's that or that, you know, it's where they're, we allocate it based on the parking lots. So only the Leroy West ones are supposed to come in here.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not really sure that it's so much that they're better, that we've had periods where we haven't enforced.
Got it. Back on 16 now, Ben?
Yep.
Can you just talk a little bit about professional services? You're holding it constant, I see, of course, from this year, but, you know, over the last couple of years, it's been...
Right, so we used to have the police department manage the parking tickets. They had a part-time employee who handled all the parking tickets. And there's a cost associated with the system we use, it's called Complus, where, have you ever gotten a parking ticket from us? It's computerized, it's a little printout, and then they come in with the handheld devices and dock them. And Complus handles the collection of anybody who wants to pay online. They provide us a report every month showing us all the heavy hitters, the people who are very delinquent. So we moved the cost for that service to this budget because we took the parking tickets on as part of the reception duties back in, it was fiscal '19. So that's why you see the big jump, is from when we did that, when we moved things over here.
Okay, so this again is the cost to administer parking tickets. And you, this is obviously a fixed cost regardless of how, about how many...
There's some fluctuation depending on how frequently we want them to send out delinquent notices and how many get processed, but it's relatively constant.
But it's not tied to the parking tickets, which, back on the other question, are going down. Parking ticket revenues going down, this wouldn't change this number?
Right. And you know, one of the things with parking tickets going down sometimes is that people don't pay. And, well, I won't talk about our parking ticket hearing officer. We may be switching to a different, to a software that will do all of the parking ticket, all the parking enforcement. It would handle the permits, it would handle the daily pay, it would handle the tickets. Because one thing that happens now is if you're a scofflaw, you know, you've got five tickets, we look for you, we look for your license plate. But if you've paid today, you don't get flagged on our system.
Okay.
You know, when we drive by your car, it doesn't, it says, you know, you paid today. So we don't give you another ticket, we don't boot you.
Right.
It's only by our going out and looking for people actively that we get some of these. So we're looking to move to a system that will tell us when we drive by a car that paid today but has five outstanding tickets, it will tell us, you know, hey, back up, you know, that car has five outstanding tickets.
So what will you do in that case?
Boot them.
You would boot them?
We have a, yeah, at a certain level, either certain amount or certain dollar amount of tickets or a certain number of tickets, we boot you.
Okay. Be good to know at some point in the future what those thresholds are.
Dollar amounts around $200, and tickets, it's four, sometimes three if you've been blatant about it.
Okay. Are there any other punitive actions that the town can take aside from booting? I mean, other services in town, and this could be an offline, you know, for another day, but...
No, we actually, we looked into that. No, the only other thing we do is if you have a permit and you abuse the permit, we'll take it away from you. So what we consider abusive permit is you have a permit, you give it to David to use. That's not allowed.
Right.
And we would take it away from you.
Okay. I'm thinking like parking, beach, I'm thinking of other services, but we're going to stay within...
Well, no, we looked into that. Could we do any of those kind of things? And no, we cannot.
Right.
That's what I was... Yeah. Okay. The next section is Human Resources.
Any questions, sorry? Anybody else?
I'm just curious. How much does it cost us to boot and unboot laws? Do you know?
We have a boot. We have employees who are already on the clock to go out and boot it. How much it costs us to remove it depends on when the person comes in. If they come in, you know, like after 3:00 or so, the police department has to send somebody to unlock it. But again, it's an officer who's on duty already, so it's really not a cost.
I'm sorry, certainly back, you mentioned you're looking into another software program that would be more encompassing. Is that something for next year, like, or are you looking now?
I would like to be able to put out an RFP and make a choice and have it in place for the next renewal season, so before the new permits are issued. Because one of the things we would like to get is to go tagless, to go permitless. There are software programs out there that will recognize the first plate that's on your permit and then shut down or disallow the other plates that are on your permit. Because we allow four plates per permit.
Right, right.
So one of the reasons why we need the hightags now is that we don't have the capability of stopping you from having all four of your cars in the lot at once except for the fact you have to have the hightag. So if we can get the software that will drive by, see the first car that's on the permit, shut off all the other ones so that when we see the next one, we, you know, it's not valid. They get a ticket.
Okay, and so that would be, I'm sorry, so the RFP, when?
The RFP is pretty much done, I just need to get it out.
Okay.
We would want to get it training, installed and trained over the summer.
Okay, great. Would there be, so that, but that's within a line item, there's no additional?
You know, what we're looking at would not increase our costs. A lot of the programs now, instead of paying for the program, we would be paying through the service. For example, you know, the parker would be paying for some of the services. Human Resources, we have a Human Resources Director and then the other portion of the administrative assistant.
Can I ask a question on the performance measures? The workers' com, workdays lost, employees with lost workdays, are those just town hall and PD employees?
There would be all-town employees.
All-town, including Board of Education?
No, sorry, just town employees. No, sorry, just town employees.
Okay.
It's a good measure because, you know, the more we can do to reduce lost workdays, the better off we are.
In that sheet also, very last item, HR-sponsored employee development. That was a big number past year. It really dropped off. Any, there's no significance to that, is there?
No, I wouldn't say there is because sometimes we've had training where we mandated attendance. So if we don't mandate attendance, you know, we actually have training tomorrow, the retirement training, that's not mandated. But we've had some sexual harassment training where we mandated that every employee attend. And some of it depends on, you know, we're doing a safety training for Public Works and Parks and Rec departments. And this is just the ones that are done by the HR department. You know, police have a lot of their own training programs. Overall, this budget is not increasing too much. What we are looking at is increases in medical services. And that's because, you know, we have to, we have to drug test certain employees. And we have to provide. We have to test, we have to provide CDL physicals for the drivers who have those.
And we're implementing the OSHA hearing conservation program.
I don't know if you heard that. We're implementing an OSHA hearing conservation program.
What does that mean?
For people who work with loud machinery, we're implementing a program to protect their hearing.
So this increase is related to all of those combined or one particular element?
Primarily the OSHA hearing training.
Okay.
And the reason the full-time salary actually goes down is because of one less pay.
One less day.
One less day.
Yeah?
Got it. Thought that was very unusual.
You'll see that in other places.
Any questions about human resources? Yes, Dan?
On the turnover, just how do those numbers compare, if you have it, to peers? And second question, same subject, and why the projected increase?
Why the projected increase for next year? It's actually projected to go down next year. The turnover rate is, current year it's projected at twenty-five percent, and we're projecting that it will go down to twenty percent.
I'm sorry, I'm on the, I'm on the, right below that.
The overall employee turnover rate.
Going from four point eight to six and four at a time.
I'm gonna say, looking at longevity of employees. And assuming that we, I'd say there's nothing that we know. But, you know, recognizing that we do have some very senior employees that may decide to retire.
So turnovers includes retirements?
Yes.
And then, do we know how these numbers compare with some of our other towns?
Um, no, but I'll ask HR if they can get that information.
Jack?
To follow up on Dan. If we're, and I'm gonna say not by department by department, but rather, you know, looking at from an HR. If we are anticipating certain retirements, I'm assuming that the people that we will be replacing them with will be coming in at a lower grade? Is there, is that a, number one, is that a true statement since I see Kate holding up her figures?
So if we knew that somebody, if we knew for sure that somebody was retiring. And we knew when, like, last year when we did the budget, we knew that Captain Lawler was retiring. So we did budget for his replacement rather than for him. But we don't know. Nobody has given us retirement paperwork. This is just an assumption based on past history. You know, I do expect that, I think there will be some turnover. I've heard rumors, but we don't know anything, so we can't, it would not be appropriate for us to budget that.
But if we do, you know, I know that the Board of Ed does something similar based on turnover without necessarily knowing. Now, I know the salary is somewhat different here, but my next question would be, you know, even if we have turnover of like twenty percent in the first year of people, we're then going out and hiring another first-year person, so it's not necessarily a change in grade or work or pay. And so my question then is, it's significant on a Board of Ed, but is it, would it be less significant on the town side?
I think it depends on where the turnover is. You know, if it's a department head, we may not have savings.
Right.
If we had, you know, if you think what happened when Chief Osborne retired, basically you swapped a chief for a first-step patrol officer. That's significant.
Right. But for the rest of it, I mean, if we're talking about, I'm gonna say, and basic, if you have typical staff, you know, somebody from Public Works lasts a year and they were grade one.
That's not gonna have anything significant.
With another grade one, so the turnover may not be significant.
And there's no predictability in order for us to begin to budget for that?
We're not, we're not large enough to be able to look at our history and be statistically, you know, you know, reasonably sure that that's gonna hold.
That's why I asked whether or not it's significant or material to the team. It probably isn't.
No. Okay.
Finance. The expenditures start, are on page twenty-six.
And just to point out, because I think there were some questions asked last night about investment revenues and methodology, if I understood those questions correctly.
Yep.
You know, the interest on investments shows in the finance department. It doesn't show under the town treasurer appropriately, just to make that.
Well, so the kind of parent organization is the finance department.
Right.
And then the treasurer is a subset of that, that's why.
I'm just clarifying for the public.
Overall, there really isn't much of a change here. There's a slight drop in the salary. That's a result of actual turnover we had last year. We are putting some more money into conferences and meetings to allow more of Jen's staff to attend training outside the town hall. We'd like for one of the other members of the staff to be able to either go to a government finance officer's training session or to MUNIS training.
Any questions about the finance department?
Under performance measures, I was just looking at total number of payroll checks. I thought we converted over to the once every two weeks, right?
We did, and you see that, that was the drop from the actual sixteen, seventeen to actual seventeen, eighteen because the only union that was on weekly was the Public Works Department.
And there was only twenty-eight of them.
Right, so when we settled their contract a couple of years ago, that's when we saw the decrease.
All right.
What's the long-term goal for percentage of invoices paid electronically?
I don't know what's feasible. I'd like to see more than fifty percent. I don't know if that's reasonable. But that's gonna, this year our focus is on payroll, next year our focus is gonna be on, or, yeah, this year's payroll. Next year, I want to focus on accounts payable and probably do an RFP for an e-payable service. Because we've only been doing it through outreach through our departments, talking to their vendors or if a vendor happens to have any information on their invoice. We'd like to be more proactive on that.
All right, so the priority is here's the payroll system, not this.
Right.
Cool.
Does there, Ben, have a effect on the fees, electronic fees for payments?
It would, no, it would actually be less because once we factor in the bank processing fees, mailing fees, time spent on actually sending out a check, the cost of the electronic.
It would offset it. You won't see that all reflected in Jen's budget though, because like, the mailing cost is not in her budget. But the banking fees would go down, or office supplies should be reduced.
Right.
Is now the right time to talk about the investment income?
It's Paige, yeah.
Pardon me?
It's Paige, it's the treasurer, so, yeah. Yes, I'm sorry.
I just have one question. Do we use banks for processing there where we make investments unless any way to negotiate either the price is down or the rates up on the investments?
Um, we use one bank for all of our checking. And we do have investments there. We are paying, are we paying with soft dollars or hard dollars?
Hard dollars.
Hard dollars. But I think, is there an opportunity to do that? Yes. I'm not sure the extent to which we've done that lately.
It hasn't been done since I've been here. It's definitely something that should be done.
Thank you.
As a follow-up though, most of our dispersment accounts are zero balance accounts if I'm not correct. Which means, for people who don't know, the balance of that bank account is always zero and we're only paying in what cleared that day, less any deposits that went in.
Right, right.
So that's why we're paying hard fees instead of balance.
Well, we, you pay hard fees because you can, you have more access to your money. If you were paying with soft dollars, you'd have to keep a certain amount, yeah.
And based upon the rates, you'd have to keep a lot there.
Yeah.
Okay, you wanted to talk about?
The investment income?
Yes.
Yeah, in fiscal year nineteen, we achieved significantly higher amount of investment income than we budgeted. And based on the fact that we have already exceeded the budgeted amount for the current calendar year, looks like we're going to again. My focus on this has been the fact that if we could more accurately estimate, it might allow the Board of Finance to set a mill rate that was lower, which all the citizens in town I'm sure would appreciate. And, you know, I can't look at a five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-dollar number, you know, and make sort of any real assessment as to, I know it's up from the current budget of the year, but I can't make any real assessment on, do I think it's close to accurate or not? Or is the methodology accurate? I can tell you the handful of things that, at a minimum, I would need to be able to see to make a reasonable calculation. I'm sure that you guys do this at some level anyway. You know, depending on what period you use, you're gonna need the average investable balance for each period, whether it be done on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. You're gonna need the expected return. There's some reference in here that the Fed funds rate is a reasonable proxy for our investment returns. But you'd need some type of correlation study on historical actualized realized return versus the Fed funds rate. And last but not least, to project the interest rate that we use to calculate a forward number, there is a very large, very liquid, very active Fed funds futures market. And that market provides a pretty reasonable estimate of what the market's current expectations are for a forward interest rate. Those types of things might help us get to a number that we could be more comfortable with.
Okay, so I'm not taking a position on whether or not the treasurer's estimate is accurate best. I don't have a staff to do that. We have very limited staff in the finance department. And that's a big ask of time from the staff to take out of what they already have on their plates to do. I think if you want to ask the treasurer to undertake that, that's, you know, your call as elected officials. But I don't, you know, I don't see asking the finance department staff to take that on.
I would think that it's a great discussion to have with the town treasurer. She indicated to us that she has made some changes in her revenue estimate methodology. So it would be great to hear from her about what that is. And, you know, it's just a reminder too that our treasurer is an elected treasurer. She has a lot of discretion and autonomy. I will share that I believe that there's an important role for the Board of Finance to play in that. So it's a great discussion for, you know, the, sort of the three legs of the stool, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Town Treasurer to have so that we can, you know, I have confidence that she's put a lot of work into her numbers. You know, I think she took to heart the conversations that we had last year and used some different kind of methodology. But I really, she's not here tonight, so I'd really like to give her an opportunity to share that information with us. And then again, I think the most important relationship on these revenue estimates is between the Town Treasurer and the Board of Finance, and I'm looking at Dan, so he can take some notes about that, but.
Lucky I.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have a suggestion for the best way to have her share that information with us? Do you want her to do it for the group as a whole? Would you like me to talk with her privately?
I think that we can channel that request. You know, Kate and Jen are taking questions down. We can channel that request through staff. And.
Okay, great.
Go from there.
Okay, on the expenditure side of that budget, it's salary, the treasurer, which is set for the term, and small amount for office supplies.
So that's one employee, one FTE?
Yes, one. It's technically a half, part-time, or at least it's paid on a part-time basis.
So you say point-five FTE?
Point-five FTE, yeah.
Is that appropriate? Okay.
Yeah. We treat the part-time elected officials differently than part-time employees. Part-time elected officials are eligible for benefits where part-time employees are not. You know, realistically, with all of our elected officials, they're paid what they're paid. And it doesn't matter if they show up for a day of work or not. They don't get vacation time or sick time. They get paid what they get paid. So if they don't come to work, I'm gonna guess they wouldn't be reelected.
Not all elected officials avail themselves of certain benefits, though. I would say.
I would say.
I think some elected officials, that's why they get themselves elected.
Other elected officials are also paid.
Well, those would be one of the benefits we don't take, is avail them.
Okay.
Next up is the Board of Finance, very basic budget. They pay for a clerk to take minutes at their meetings, and they pay for the town share of the cost of the audit. They are planning to put the audit out to bid, and I believe we've estimated a slight increase in the cost of the audit.
Is that primarily what's in professional services, the audit cost?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And that, that cost is shared by the Board of Ed, but it's actually the town side. When it comes to the audit, the town side is higher.
Any questions on the Board of Finance? Okay, moving on to Assessor. I had a question on performance measures. With regard to corrections to motor vehicles per calendar year, total workdays to process motor vehicle corrections, I'm just wondering if any of these, some of these metrics have goals associated. goals associated with the data that's provided? Is there a standard he's trying to reach?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if there's a standard he's trying to reach or a point he's trying to make because the data comes primarily from the state.
Mm-hmm.
And can sometimes be riddled with errors. So it might be difficult for him to have a goal when a lot of it is out of his control.
Okay.
But I will.
It's, I guess I would express it this way. This chart, then, some of the data on this chart is less a performance measure than it is an inventory of work.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything you find, not just here, but there's a number of places where it's not really, what you're seeing are really not performance measures, they're output measures.
Yep. Okay.
What he's really saying, it seems to me with that, is the 10% of the cars' information that comes down is wrong. I should be corrected.
Yes.
Thank you, DMV.
Charge the state back.
Yeah.
Exactly. You just send it.
Yeah.
DMV.
And so, just a question for me. We capture state pilot reimbursement in assessor revenue, is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes.
Okay.
They're the ones that file for the reimbursement.
Yes, okay.
On the veteran?
Yep.
In the prior three years, had we put anything in our budget for those?
Yes.
I see that we're not, we didn't.
Yeah.
The adopted budget for 1920, we don't have anything. And for, and so I'm just curious.
For disabled. Disabled's not worth budgeting.
I mean, I know there's small amounts.
We get 200 bucks.
If I recall, I think that the revenue in those programs was discontinued.
By the state?
By the state.
So the state.
Or it was threatened to be discontinued, so for the $2,000 that we would budget there, we chose not to.
But the state should still be requiring us to give those.
We did receive $1,185 this fiscal year.
$1,180?
$1,185 for veterans.
But I also want to stress that the state is requiring us to give certain veterans benefits, and if they're not reimbursing us, they're still going to require us to give those.
Yes.
Okay. That was part of the point.
Would it be reasonable to make a $1,000 revenue assumption for veterans reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board concur with that? I mean, looking back at history, I would think a $1,000.
Yes.
Well, $1,185.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
You want to do $1,185?
No, that's what we're at now, right now.
Right. Do you want to repeat that for then?
No, I would just say a thousand.
Oh, okay. All right. No, no, I didn't know if you were.
Thousand or twelve hundred.
Okay.
As a follow-up to that, the town gave a special veterans rebate out of a number of years ago that I know was approved also by the RTM. Where would that show up? I know that we sometimes adjust our rate.
When the mill rate is calculated, it's factored into that, but because it's revenue that we never, it's, we never bill for it.
Right.
So we don't record it, we don't put it in, it's just, it's one of the factors in calculating the mill rate.
And the follow-up to that, I thought that was the case, but how successful have we been on having people apply for that?
On that.
Because I think initially we thought it would be one number and then ended up being less. So I'm just curious on that. And whether or not it's worthwhile to remind people who serve that that's available.
I'll see if Tony can give us some numbers on that.
Thank you.
We also have, our veteran service provider is Ally Ramstek in our Human Service Department. So to the extent that she has clients that would be eligible for that program, she refers them.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Page 37, are we there?
No, 36.
Thank you.
Okay. So the full-time salary, there is an employee in the assessor's office who received an upgrade in the last year and is still going through the steps, which is one of the reasons why you see an increase where in other areas you're not. Otherwise, it's a very stable budget. Software support is going up a little bit, that's based on the estimate they received from the software provider.
Tyler?
Tyler. I'm sorry, not Tyler.
Not Tyler.
Walsh.
Walsh.
Walsh is the software that's used by the collector and the assessor. The costs are split between the two departments and the sewer fund because it's also used to collect the sewer. So then 37, the overtime salary. This is for the assessor staff, the union staff, who attend the Board of Assessment Appeal hearings.
Okay.
I did ask Tony, you know, is higher typically in the rebound years?
Right. I was wondering if that was the jump.
Yeah.
Because there's nothing associated this year so far.
Well, the hearings don't happen until March.
Thank you.
And I did ask him if he thought that we would still need that much money, and he felt that was still an appropriate amount.
Okay.
Do we need to budget any further overtime for either the assessor or the Board of Assessment and Appeals related to the variation in valuations from all of the commercial projects? Because my understanding from listening to Tony speak is that as the projects, you know, tear down things and build things, that the valuations will change.
The valuations will change. The bulk of that is, work is gonna be done by Tony.
Okay.
You know, the deputy assessor is a certified assessor. And actually, both his assistants are certified assessors. We're very lucky to have that level of professionalism there. But the bulk of it will be done by Tony. So that would not incur overtime.
Okay.
Appeals, if those, if there are any, those are likely to be another year off.
Okay. All right.
Back on 36, could you explain the difference between Training Services line 10 and Professional Services line 12? So you're holding them constant, but in the back they.
Right. Training Services is what that is, the staff attends the assessor's school every year up at UConn. And that's where they, you know, they're required to maintain a certain level of education to keep their certifications.
So everybody goes every year?
Yes.
Okay.
Professional Services, we hire, this is a moneymaker. We hire an auditor.
Does it make more than $12,000?
Yes, we do. We hire an auditor to come in and audit the personal property tax filings. And they, I believe they pick them at random. Tony might, you know, once in a while have certain things that he wants to highlight or certain businesses, but if you, if you have a business in town, you're responsible for tax on like your furnitures and fixtures. So that's the personal property, and you have to make a filing. And we've had this program, I don't know how long now, but it covers its costs and then some, every year. Because people, they make errors or they fail to disclose everything.
So this is the fee for this auditor?
This is the fee for the auditor.
And it goes up and down, the price, just 11, 8, 12, 2, 10, 6, 12?
It's based on, you know, some years it may take them less time to do the accounts that we've selected for the audit.
Okay.
I love the Lingo, personal property for a business.
That's what it's called.
No, I know, it's fine, I just.
Yeah.
Thought it was interesting.
Do people run businesses out of homes?
Yep. Oh, yeah, Tony likes it when I, you know, sometimes if I'm looking at the map of the town, and every once in a while you see on the internet, it'll show you a business in a home. And I always call him, did you know that there's a business at this address?
But we would take in more than.
We take, the audits have always covered their cost. And usually, a little, a bit more.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Personal property, the name is kind of weird, but it also includes, for example, medical equipment in a medical office. So, you know, it's a very interesting way to label a very broad category of.
Yeah. Because it's, you know, it's your. Real or personal, that's always, that's how the law divides it.
Exactly.
Personal, real is real, it can't be moved.
Right.
It's attached to the structure.
Fixed and non-fixed.
Everything else is.
And technically, if you lived in town for more than six months of the year, but your vehicle was registered out of state, you wouldn't pay motor vehicle tax, you would pay a personal property tax. Same mill rate, same end of fact, but.
Moving on from Board of Assessment Appeals to Tax Collection.
So the expenses for this are on page 42.
Just quickly, on page 41, that's a mistake on line 3, right?
A mistake on line 3. What do you mean?
The adopted budget includes Board of Education. Right now, we can only compare what the town administrator proposed. It's not a mistake.
It's not a mistake, it's just that, it's, yeah.
This is a fake out, we get every year.
Okay. All right. Because, you know, I just looked at it and I said.
We're only showing you the amount needed to cover the town's share.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a fake out every year.
Okay.
Because we don't have a Board of Education number. And so, you know, what we're showing you is a balanced budget for town operations. And that's what we would need. This is a plug number. So, you know, for people in the accounting world, you know, we don't, you're not supposed to plug it.
Right.
But the taxes are a plug.
It's a balance number.
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing remarkable in the tax collection department?
Could I just mention one thing for the benefit of my friends on the Board of Finance?
Sure.
We currently are still running a very, a very healthy surplus in the general fund at 15%. And I know there are different ways to utilize that fund, and we're gonna talk about some of those that we can exercise. But using the old philosophy or the old rule of thumb of $85,000 is one basis point on the mill rate, the 25 basis point discount from the average realized tax collection rate is still a pretty big number. And given that we already have a large surplus in the general fund, I just would ask that the Board of Finance, consider that too, in addition to anything else that we might do in terms of utilizing it for capital expenditures.
Did you get that, Dan?
25 basis, yes.
He's writing. He's writing.
This count on tax collections, right?
Yep.
It's about $350,000.
We will be making recommendations to the Board of Finance.
Cool.
The utilization of some of those reserve funds.
Either way works, sorry.
Yep. Legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
My question on expenditures is, why did you drop 50 grand?
Okay. I had bumped up the town, the town council, which is the professional services line, includes the retainer for Curtis Brinkerhoff, plus any lawsuits or legal work related to town. That includes assessments. So I had, we had increased the number in the current fiscal year because this is when we'll see the bulk of the costs related to any tax assessment appeals.
Right.
So reduced it for next year on the assumption that, you know, we've already settled some, but they're, we're working through so that that cost, that portion of it next year should go down.
And there weren't that, there weren't as many.
There weren't as many as we anticipated, yeah.
As last time around.
Yeah.
Yep.
Labor council, we're holding steady. You know, that can be, we don't use labor council during contract negotiations. Where that really comes into play is if we have a labor issue, if we have a prohibited practice complaint filed against us by the attorneys, or by the unions, and that's when we get into labor council. So we don't see a need to increase that number there. Regulatory council, we are increasing what we think we will need for next year because our moratorium on affordable housing runs out this fall. And the planning director expects to see an uptick in issues related to that.
Is that enough?
I have to tell you, you know, as I've been here 20 years, that's the biggest crap shoot, that line item. The regulatory council is the biggest crap shoot every year. You know, we've had years when we've had lawsuits from two sides of a zoning variance granted. You know, the guy who gets it sued is because he's not happy with what he got, the guy, the neighbor's unhappy that he got anything in the first place and were sued by both No idea if it's enough. It's a reasonable estimate.
It probably, you know, sometimes these cases cover multiple years, so it might be reasonable to, you know, I think it's a reasonable assumption for next year, but you can have one individual case that could be more than double that cost.
Yeah. And what we see start this in fiscal '21 will really inform fiscal '22's budget.
Yeah. Maybe we'll get lucky.
It's one thing that we've talked often on over the years, should we have in-house counsel? Would that be a way of controlling the cost? But the question always is, which type of counsel do you get? You know, do you get a general counsel who can deal with like the RTM and all the assessment appeals and all that? Or do you get the land use counsel?
Right.
And things, you know, never really a good answer. And where do we put them? Because we have no room.
You're shaking your head, kid.
Keep the choice available by going to a law firm.
Yeah.
Don't hire somebody.
Which is what we've done.
Yeah, and we've been very well served. The outcomes of the work from Curtis Brinkerhoff have been very favorable for the town of Darien. Jack?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, David, did you have another question?
No.
Okay, Jack.
I want to go back to the assessor. And I know that you were doing work in-house, and that will be part of the, based on, you know, part of that process. I'm just curious whether or not we can correlate the work that was being done there to the fact that we had much less appeals this year.
I would say yes.
Because I think that's a good story to tell.
There's no question, you might recall that we had some discussions after the last rebound. And we wanted to in particular improve our customer service for, you know, our large taxpayers. And I think that that paid dividends in the lesser number of appeals that we had this year, so.
I mean, it's a good story in two ways. Number one, I know that total cost for the assessment was less than what we had been budgeting. But also the fact that we have less appeals really saves a whole other set of funds. And I think that's, as I said, just a good story that I wanted to make sure that people are listening and understand.
Yes.
That may have taken five years, but there was a result from that.
Thank you for mentioning that. Okay. Okay. The town clerk. So I've been around for a while, but surcharge monies conveyed to state treasurer for community investment and MERS. What is that?
Money going out the door.
And it's going up.
I have no idea.
First of all, I don't really understand the concept of surcharge monies.
So when, when certain documents are recorded, you know, we have our local fee.
Yeah.
And then there's a state fee.
Okay. So that's all that means, is that's the, that's the portion of the fee collected on their behalf?
Yeah. We're the state's best, not just Darien, but all municipalities, we're their best collection agencies.
Yep.
You know, there's so many fees that we do the work, and the. You know, there's so many fees that we do the work, and the bulk of the revenue resulting from it goes to the state. Yeah, I know MERS is the municipal employee retirement system. I don't think that that's what this is.
No, this is a type of mortgage recording, I think.
Okay.
It's a mortgage system. Mortgage reporting system.
Thank you.
Mortgage recording? Yeah.
So, how do- I'll ask Donna.
Yeah, we'll find out some-
I'm sorry, I'll ask Karen.
Yeah.
It's just gone up significantly since two thousand and sixteen, so.
That doesn't mean that, it could mean one of two things. It could mean that the state increased their surcharge. It could mean that the volume has increased.
Okay. I'd love to get behind that a little bit.
I'll see what that, find out what that is.
Thank you, yep.
Oh, if he's looking, well, no, that's non-MERS. Oh, okay. So. Page forty-nine is their expenditures. You'll see that it's a decrease, and this is because we had retirement of the town clerk. When the Board of Selectmen set the salary for the town clerk, last year, we knew that Donna was retiring, so the salary was set on that basis. And then we've had a domino effect in the office that employees being replaced with junior employees. So, that's all reflected in that wage line.
Are we still, wasn't there one employee outstanding?
There's still one left, so we've got that budgeted. I think probably at a grid step one. The, yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Okay. Non-remarkable. Registars.
Registars. On budget.
Yeah.
Okay. There are two parts to the registrar's budget. We have the voter registry, which is their regular ongoing work of registering voters and keeping up the voting list. Not, no change, basically, overall. It's staying flat. We've got the whole, you know, one day less causing reduction in salary. And their printing is going up, and that has to do with, they're putting out more information about some of the changes in the districting, trying to notify people.
I think there's a piece of data missing from the performance measures on-
There's a lot of data in the Department of Treasury, is there?
Yeah.
Remember what I said about trying to gather data last night?
Well, it's something that they have the ability to do because it's expressed in sixteen, seventeen, as the presidential election, total election cost per voter. So, they should be able to project that, make some assumptions on voting, voter turnout.
Yeah. On page fifty-six, we have the elections budget. Yeah, question.
And this is just for my own learning. I don't know if it's, if it's done or not, but as new developments come on, because there's several of them that we're now anticipating, do we do anything different to register the people that are moving into them? Or do they all have to come one at a time to town hall to register?
Well, they don't have to come to town hall to register. You can do it when you get your DARMs license. But we, I don't know that they'll plan anything, but that's, you know, still a ways out in the future. If they'll plan any registration drives or anything like that.
Because I'm even asking about the past. For example, when, when we moved into Kensington, there are still probably a dozen or two, maybe even-
That are not registered?
People that are not registered. I asked somebody to check for me now because it's my district. But, just a question, whether-
So, so everyone who, well, we can ask that question, you know?
Yeah, we'll raise it with them. You know, it might be valuable for them to do it. And they go do the drives at the high school to get the kids turning eighteen. And they've done it at, what do you call it? Sidewalk sale days, I think they've done some stuff.
Yep.
So, it might be a thing, you know, like when the Royal opens up, head up there and get those seniors.
Or where you live, you know, there's a community space, so maybe they-
Yeah, we could do it on a Saturday afternoon.
Yeah. We'll ask them about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered whether anybody had thought about that.
Thanks for bringing that up.
With the actual cost of the elections, what we do is we budget for known elections. And so, we are expecting two elections in fiscal twenty-one, fiscal twenty-one. A primary and the general election. And that's what the survey does.
One primary.
One primary.
Right.
If there are- I don't think they, did they feel that there would, might be a second one?
There's not a lot of certainty.
Yeah. So, we didn't, you know, only when we know. Otherwise, if we don't know, then we find it out of the, out of contingency.
The training services at three thousand, is that for the election?
Those are for the election workers. They have to be trained. And we-
We just expect more because you went from two thousand to three thousand? Well, it's higher than-
Yes.
I think it's-
Yes. And especially because it's a presidential election.
David, I might, I can also say from speaking to both the Democrat and Republican registrars, there's been a great deal of turnover into where previously worked elections. So, while everybody has to still be trained, there will be a lot of misuses coming up.
And that's different from professional services?
Professional services has to do with the printing of the ballot or the, how do I put it? The programming of the computers, the, the balivider.
Okay. So, the programming is the professional services?
Yes.
Is there two primaries? Do they give us additional funds?
Pardon?
Is there two primaries? Does the state get additional funds?
Does the state get additional?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
The state gives us no funds.
State doesn't, yeah. No, but if there were two primaries during the fiscal year, we would come back for more money.
But do you want to decrease the program expenses?
They were going to, program expenses, that's not programming.
No, it just, it just seems counter to the direction we're going with the election.
Yeah, but we made a change, we were making a change in one of the providers.
Okay.
And so, they were able to reduce costs.
Okay, good. I just got a question.
Yes.
I just want to mention that tomorrow, the, at the Darien Men's Association, the registrar of voters is going to come by, make a presentation, and look for volunteers.
Great goal.
Great thing.
Yeah. It is hard sometimes.
There are people who are eager to help.
Yeah, it's great, it's a great idea.
And to tell you, you know, one of the things that they have been working on, and it's kind of holding right now, but they're looking at, could we redistrict to save money when it comes to the elections? Reduce the number of districts. We have six districts.
Correct.
So, if we could reduce the number of districts, it would make it easier to find polling place, but it would also reduce our costs for the elections.
And that comes through the state?
That comes through the RTM.
To redistrict?
To redistrict, yeah. The state has to, I think the state has to do something, you know, be, allow it, but generally, it's a local, it's a local decision. There's a whole lot of things that go on with it, like, you know, where you can have polling places.
I know, right.
You know?
Don't like the line with that, yeah.
Done with the registrars? IT. The bulk of this budget is for the services that we contract with the Board of Education and for our software maintenance and support.
So, I want to talk about this a little bit. We have an agreement with the Darien Public Schools Information Technology Department to provide our services, right?
Yes.
I think that we are to, in a process to update our agreement, I believe.
It's still sitting on our office on site.
I think that it, I'd like to, you know, have some discussions about this. It has always been confusing to me why this is a fee for service where we have other items in the Board of Selectmen budget that go the opposite direction, that we don't collect a fee for the service. What immediately comes to mind are crossing guards. And as we roll out the utilization of police personnel for school resource officers, there's at least a portion of the time of those individuals that really should be attributed to Board of Education services. So, I, I know that that's a policy decision that we can't really address during the budget season. I don't really think that's a wise idea. But I think we need to take a look at that. And I'd like to join with, you know, ask Board of Finance and Finance and Budget members to weigh in on that idea.
Any questions on IT?
Yep, the, the software maintenance and support here. It's different from when we look at all the individual budgets, when we see software maintenance and support. Those are all what, individual programs, unique to their departments?
Right. This is the department, the programs that are basically town-wide.
Townwide. Because if you lump it all together, the numbers keep getting up every year.
Yes, they do. They don't go down.
You don't buy hardware anymore, you just keep paying software.
Yeah. Okay. The next budget is probate court. We are obligated to provide them with basically what they need to operate. We share the costs with New Canaan. So, we, we pay the bills, we bill New Canaan for their share, including the overhead. But there's really no discretion here.
No rent charge, yeah?
Well, we charge New Canaan rent.
Yeah, we do.
Ah, sorry.
Just a point of clarification, the RTM budget, was that embedded in the town clerk?
Yeah, we did, I need to update that schedule.
All right.
We, last year, we moved RTM in under the town clerk's budget.
Thanks.
Because she's the one who manages it. And really, all of this is a clerical budget, paying for the secretary who takes the minutes.
Okay.
I thought it was in here.
No, it's not.
It's not. So, let's see. We're going to move on to community services, but with your indulgence, I'd like to ask if we could just stretch our legs for a moment? Okay, we're going to call ourselves back into order, and Kate has some updated information on the intern, proposed intern expense.
So, the program is for fifteen hours a week for thirty-nine weeks. It runs from August to May. And the timeline would be if we, if we do want to participate in the process, go through interview, selection, and offer process in April, March and April, and then maybe just come to work first in August. So, we'd have them for the better part of a year.
Yeah, that's great.
Fifteen hours a week.
So, what were the months, August through what again?
August through May.
That's nice.
And they're MPA and MPP, so Public Administration and Public Policy Second Year Graduate Students.
That's perfect.
And I, you know, when they had sent me this stuff originally, I looked at what other communities had used them for, and I reached out to a number of colleagues that were listed as having used them for, and everybody was very positive about the program, so, anyway.
It's a good experience.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're now moving into the-
Do you want to go to planning and zoning first, or community?
Let's do community services, if you don't mind. And that includes beautification, celebrations, and community grants, and harbor master.
Did you want to, okay. I was interested, I had things to pass out.
Yes.
Okay. So, beautification is first. They had asked for anything, I thought.
They did, they requested thirty-seven-five hundred.
Okay, but that's not much. Okay, sorry. They asked for thirty-seven-five hundred. I did reduce it to their current level of funding. It just, they, they do wonderful things for the town, but I just feel like when we're asking department heads to keep, keep increases to zero, that this isn't, this isn't nice to have, not a need to have. So, I held them, I held them clapping.
Could you clarify what they do versus what other, just general maintenance around town?
Well, what they do is changing, right now, there's a new chairman of the beautification committee. But if you see the hanging baskets in town?
Yeah.
They pay for those. They sponsor the adopt-a-garden spots. They pay for the watering of the baskets, and they've done work on the berm at the Darien train station with planting it.
Oh, yeah.
We, they did some work here at town hall, after telling us how ugly it was. We had some money in the capital fund to improve the landscaping here at town hall. I did want to put a lot because I just really feel like when, when you're saying no to other things, making town hall pretty is not a priority. But they did do some work here at town hall with the plantings.
Do they share with you what they were hoping to do with their increase?
Yes. And I do not have it with me, but they did give us some specifics.
Is that-
Well, Jen has it with her.
They didn't really explain what their increase is because like-
They didn't, no.
It's, they've kind of rethought with the new chair, what they want to spend their money on. So, they did itemize what they want to spend money on. The majority of their ask is twenty-two thousand dollars for the hanging baskets.
But some of the things they wanted to, like put recycling bins out, you know, that shouldn't necessarily be an expense of the beautification committee, that should be public works.
Okay. It's a great idea.
It's all, but that requires, I'll just interject here.
True.
Putting recycling bins out in town requires some discussion. It's a great idea. But we have to make sure that our public works department, who picks up the garbage, actually has the capacity to be able to do the recycling and to, you know, in our homes, we can sort and we can make sure our recyclables are clean, but I don't know if we want our DPW staff, you know, picking-
Sorting mixed garbage.
Paper out from plastic.
Exactly, because nobody-
Right. We've had this discussion many times about the bins at the beach. And unfortunately, people just co-mingle things into the recycling bins, and it's-
They see a bin and they toss garbage in. It's, you know, they don't-
They don't distinguish?
No.
There, there are certain-
It's, it's a good thing when they get it in the bin.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point, good point.
There are things that we can do as we, as we educate our community on the importance of recycling. There are certain bins that, that help promote best practice recycling behavior. So, it's certainly a discussion for the future, but it's not something that we could entertain in this budget cycle.
And another thing they wanted to do was, they were calling it the program No Empty Windows. They want to work with landlords to put displays in empty storefronts. I like the concept, I'm just not sure that that should be a town function.
Yeah, it's probably better suited for the Darien Chamber of Commerce to work with property owners on something like that. But I do want to put a plug in for the beautification commission. They do a phenomenal job. And I, and I often get accolades from people outside of our town for how beautiful our town looks. They love the hanging baskets. I got some recommendations from someone recently on the hanging baskets to maybe think about instead of putting the wreaths out, to do some evergreens in the hanging baskets. There'd be some benefits to considering that anyway because wreaths have a religious connotation. And we're trying to move to certain policies to make sure that we're, we're equitable in our celebration of the holidays. So, happy to work with beautification on some of those ideas.
Jamie?
Yes, Jack.
Two things. First, just out of curiosity, who's the new chair? And second of all, at one time, they, as we know, had difficulty. Are they fully staffed in their committee?
Well, we reduced the size, but I do think we might need one.
I'd have, I'd have to go back and look.
I believe the new Lucia- I believe the new Lucia and Zakowski and Juliette Kane are co-chairs.
Okay. I mean, I know that some of the people that came forward after we reduced the size were some really phenomenal people.
Yeah.
Join up. I'm happy to see that.
Next page down is a lot of grants that we, celebration of grants. So the first couple lines, you see program expenses and facility repair and maintenance. Those have to do with monuments and ceremonies. The program expenses are costs associated with the Memorial Day Parade. They're looking to be able to do a little bit more at the parade this year, you know, get more bands that are paid for. It's a good thing. Facility repair and maintenance, they do take care of our monuments, and they do some, take care of some of our cemeteries. They asked for additional funding and...
Is that enough?
Is it enough? No, no, I'm sure it's not enough. It's, if you look in the, you know, capital, they asked for some money. They would like more.
Just thinking about cemetery...
But it felt was already a significant increase that, you know, we were proposing, so.
And is it from home again?
Pardon?
From home.
Oh, monuments and ceremonies.
Monuments, okay.
Bicentennial celebration is this year, so there's no funding next year. The holiday lights grant is a grant we give to the Chamber of Commerce to assist with the holiday lights downtown. Historical Society...
Should we call the Darien Museum?
Well, I guess we should be changing that.
Have they officially changed their name? Or is that, was that a proposal?
They might have for the next fiscal year.
They asked for $50,000. The grant was provided to them originally fiscal '17, on the basis of the fact that they maintain some older town records. You know, with their desire to move to a museum, they wanted us to support other costs. I didn't feel that that was a municipal responsibility, and that's why I held the funding to the grant that we had been providing for the maintenance of the existing documents. You know, you all may feel otherwise, but, you know, that was my feeling, was that their desire to come to a museum, while, you know, admirable, was not a municipal function. The Depot asked for a much more significant increase. I did not fund it in full, because there wasn't sufficient supporting documentation provided.
What'd they ask for?
They asked for, it was $12,000 increase. And I just, you know, I think they do a wonderful job, but there wasn't sufficient information provided to show how they planned to use the money. We did ask for more supporting information, but we haven't received it. So I did budget a 3% increase, because they haven't had an increase in our funding in a number of years, so I thought a minor increase was reasonable, but the full amount that they asked for, I couldn't, I couldn't support.
May I ask why we have not given Kids in Crisis our Safe Rides monies in the past few years?
No request.
No, got it. Interesting.
Katie, in your list of things that you cut back, is the Darien Historical Society in there?
Yes, it's on the first page, if you look under the beautification tool.
Oh, okay, there it is.
Why isn't it the, oh, it's under Youth Services.
Oh, yeah, because we hadn't moved.
Oh, okay, so first they're agreeing.
So you see, the grant for the Depot is on the back page, under Youth Services. We made the decision to move all the grants up here, but we hadn't put it into Open Go. Yeah.
Okay, so they asked for 63, okay. Do they provide, I mean, I can obviously get it online, but more detail as to how, back on the Depot, I'm sorry, how this funding figures into their picture, sort of like the library does?
Yes, they do. We can get that for you. One of the things we do with all these agencies that we're giving grants to is we ask them to, do you have those in one of the forms? Give me a good one. Well, if they're asked to complete a form like this, that shows what they would be doing with the town money, what percentage of their funding is coming from the town, how many residents they service...
Yeah, actually, the grant form that I don't have is more extensive. These are the commission forms.
Okay. So we also ask them for the grant, for the agencies like the Depot, to provide us their financial statements. So I can send you the Depot request.
Anything else on celebrations and community grants? Okay, moving on.
Okay, so the last one is the Harbor Master?
Yep.
And that is something that, it's a service we are required to provide.
He's an agent of the state?
He's an agent, right. So we pay for telephone, we pay for things like the buoys, and I forget what the increase was for this year.
New aids to navigation buoys around rock formation in the harbors.
Buoys.
Buoys.
And that's our responsibility.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
Yep.
State mandate.
Yep. Well, the alternative is, the alternative is...
I don't think there is one, actually.
Both up on rocks.
Which we didn't, I was told.
May I ask a question? I'm sorry, back on page 75, celebrations and community grants, line three, for the fireworks, that again is, we're set for?
What we had been doing, we see the funding in years past.
And then I know it's...
This is where we put money to cover the police expense. We make the police cover it out of their budget. You know, it's a town function. Parks and Rec has taken the responsibility for it back.
Okay.
And so the, any overtime associated with the police is built into the police budget.
All right, so the expense is just, we still have it, it's just allocated into different?
Yes, yes.
We have certain expenses, and then the expenses are shared with private giving. Right, that's, I think, is a lot of, lot of that. A lot of sponsors and fireworks.
When the fireworks came back and were supported through donations, the one expense that the town agreed to carry was the cost of the police.
Right, yep. Okay, all right, that's just, as a footnote, so people know it's still happening, but...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
As a follow-up, I might, can you, I just overco, I know that the parking fees goes into the giving fund, or?
Yes.
Right. I just couldn't recall, but...
I think they try and keep a little carryover every year.
Right.
And I don't know if you know how much that is, Jen, or not. I don't know.
It's only our first or second year with it, so I don't think they've really set that up, yep.
So is that a town fund, or is that kept outside?
It's a town fund. It's actually part of the, if you look in your other funds tabs, I think it's called Park and Rec Special Events.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Okay, move on. Should we go back up to planning, land use?
The expenses for this, on page 67, it's under tab three. Really no significant change in the budget. They have employees going through steps in this department, which is why you see the full-time salary increase. But let's flip to capital. I think this is the first specific...
Did you want to talk about software maintenance and support?
Well...
Or is that related to what you're about to tell us?
Yeah.
Okay.
That number could change.
Okay.
On page, where is it?
I would do 210?
Is it nine or 10?
208.
Okay, page 210.
Land use software?
Land use software, $69,000. Currently, we use a program called City View. It's used by planning and zoning, by the building department, the fire marshal's office, the assessor's office, and the health department. They all have some level of use of it, but planning has been the driving force behind it. Last year, we went to put mechanical building permits online. It was a very difficult process. And before going ahead with putting building permits on, full building permits online, they decided to research what else was out there, because they felt that it really had not been a good process, it was not as customer-friendly as we would like it to be. So through research, they found another software called Viewpoint. It's used in a number of communities. It's more commonly used in Connecticut than City View was. They've been through multiple demonstrations of it. It is very user-friendly. You know, one of the problems we had with City View, and the last time we had to upgrade it, we purchased the software, then we had to upgrade it, and it was like $200,000 to upgrade the software. City, or Viewpoint doesn't work that way. We'd be paying a fee, and upgrades are included. So this is the direction they want to go in. They want to purchase this new software that would, if we move forward with that, that would possibly make a change in the support costs. It's part of what's being evaluated as we go through the technology assessment, but I've seen the system, I think it would be so much better for our customers, our residents and the builders in town that would use it, making the online system so much more usable for all the departments. So I believe we should go forward with that.
So the 69, 886, is that a lump sum payment, or is the cost distributed among those departments that you mentioned?
Nope, that's the full cost.
Okay.
Planning is taking the lead on it, so that's the full cost for the software.
Okay.
Are there maintenance costs associated with that?
There will be, but not in this, not in the first year.
Not in the first year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So while we're on that page, planning, they have to do an affordable housing plan. It's a state requirement. This is to hire a consultant to complete the affordable housing plan, to assist them in completing the affordable housing plan. And I believe...
Describe in detail on page 10. No, in the back.
Yes, yes. If you go, you know, when you go all the way to the back, this is your capital plan that's in the back, they give you quite a bit of information about it. And then they've asked for a new plotter.
Okay, so then, how does that relate back to software maintenance and support on page 67?
The plotter, or the software?
The software maintenance and...
If we, if we were to go forward with the purchase, we should be able to reduce or eliminate that amount in the current year's budget. It would have to come back to a certain, to some level in the future, but a lot will depend on the timing. So, you know, we've got to keep City View until the new system is in and up and running.
So this amount is attributed to maintaining City View?
That is City View.
Okay.
And that's the $47,000?
So whether or not we can reduce that amount, you know, for a portion of this year...
Right, there are other things that go through there, we couldn't, not all of it is City View.
Yes, there's also the GIS.
Got it.
But that's the $47,000?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody good on zoning, or operating in capital?
Sorry.
Hang on one second. Anybody else on the board? Questions on zoning, operating in capital?
Clerical services?
I know you're holding it steady, but it was a jump from...
Well, I'm going to say that the rate increased. They do a little bit more detailed. They have transcripts done for a lot of their hearings.
Yeah, their minutes have to be in a form that would allow them to be used in court documents.
And this covers planning and zoning, CBA, EPC...
ARB?
ARB.
Okay, so you envision you're going to use all 21-3 this year, and you don't need any more next year, coming up from 14 the year before?
Some of that, you know, it can vary depending on the volume of meetings, the number of meetings that they have.
Okay, so you don't anticipate any more meetings?
I don't, we're not anticipating more meetings, we're not anticipating a drop-off either.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, on the new software package, is, are there training costs? And if so, are there, are they embedded in the $70,000?
Yes.
Okay. Are we good with planning? We'll move on to building.
We have three full-time inspectors, and we have one part-time inspector. We are budgeted for two part-time inspectors. The part-timers are to help us deal with the additional work related to all the construction projects. So I would anticipate that we will try to fill the second part-time position this year. We went with part-timers because we didn't, once these developments are all done, we shouldn't be able to go back to normal staffing. That's what we anticipate, so we didn't want to hire permanent staff that we would only later have to lay off. Seasonal and temporary, they do bring in an intern to help with some of the microfilming and the documents. They're cutting that back a little bit this year. I think they have found that the digitizing of the documents that we've done, and putting the public use terminals out in the hallway, has helped them tremendously, helped cut down the document requests at the desk, which has enabled their staff to be more efficient. The, trying to think what I, professional services, I don't recall what that reduction With telecommunications, that's where they're, they do the permit workout in the field, they have tablets, and that's the increased cost for adding another person onto the system.
Professional services was scanning.
Okay, we no longer have to do as much scanning, because we've gotten caught up on all the old documents. And the office furniture equipment, that would be another. What do you call it? Fireproof file cabinet. Because they have to maintain their, their records, certain records for the life of the building.
So we didn't need another file cabinet this year.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Which one are you looking at? The.
Furniture.
Office equipment.
That one it is.
Storage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any capital for buildings?
Two questions. First, in the revenue side, did you exclude the permit fees for the Oxford's building?
Yes.
You did? Okay. And number two, when we had the meeting.
Well, we were thinking of making them pay just because you're the chairman, but you know.
Wow.
Wow. She's not so fit.
Yeah, right. Well, I mean, I can tell you Pete's not happy about that.
We, but that's, we don't charge the board of it. The only thing we will charge the project for is that portion of the fee that has to be remitted to the state.
Mm-hmm. The, no, I just want to make sure because that's a big project, sixty-three million dollars.
No.
Be a big, a lot of fees. But number two is that in, in our meeting we had here on Thursday with all of the various land use board department heads and everything else talking about it, it was clear that Pete is going to be swamped in the May-June-July timeframe. And we are really critical on a crunch on getting the building permit for the, we call it the enabling phase, the demolition of the partial demolition of, of the Oxford School, done over the summer when the students aren't there. So I'm just concerned that he may, you may need that extra person early on here. Because, I mean, he said, you've got to get to me as early as you can, all the information. And we have, we're going through six, six hearings and a whole bunch of drawings, obviously. And we are not waiting for state reimbursement on this stuff.
So the problem we have is actually, you know, trying to get somebody who wants part-time work and will stay on a part-time basis. You know, we had one who was terrific, stayed for a while, but then got a full-time job.
Yep.
I am reluctant to hire somebody on a full-time basis because we don't need them permanently.
No, I agree.
And, you know.
Maybe he has to have contract professional services.
Right.
Well, that's.
I know for our project. But for our, for our project, apparently we have to go outside.
Yes, you can go outside. So we can have the developer do that, but we can't. I believe we would have an issue with the union if we brought in a contract person that the town was paying for.
Okay. Well, I know we have to go out, the state requires us to go out and have a second opinion.
Yes.
On our situation.
But that's a different thi, that's a different thing.
Right. I'm just concerned.
It is, it is a concern for us. We, you know, we want to make sure that they are fully staffed and able to handle all the projects.
Why don't we have another conversation with Pete to see if, if he feels appropriately staffed to be able to accommodate the time schedule?
Well, you were there, you heard.
I was there.
You heard his conversation.
Yep.
Just ask clarification. There's no issue. You would envision for someone coming in part-time, but if it, read the union. But if you brought someone in from an outside contracted, there is an issue.
Yeah, because we, we have an established practice of part-time employees, part-time inspectors in that position.
Because they're obviously non-union, part-time people. So that's why I'm struggling to.
You know, and, you know, realistically, we could. If, if we can't fill it, fill the second part-time position, we could make, offer a full-time position to somebody. But, you know, that comes with benefit costs. And when the bubble passes, we would need to eliminate that position.
Yep. Right, right.
Which comes with its own cost on that end, but.
Anything else? Yes.
I have a question on page sixteen. I'm just. Are we, are you thinking part-time inspectors? Or are we stable? And, because I see.
We have two budgeted. For all of them. I think he's, he made a mistake.
Yeah, it should be.
It should be two.
Okay, that's what confused me.
Yeah.
So it's two.
It's two.
And it was two this year too?
We have two budgeted. We haven't been able to fill two. And we haven't had a need for two yet. But as, you know, as Kip points out, the, the need is coming. It's been, you know, we, we've been gearing up for this for, I think, three fiscal years, getting ready for it. And, you know, Pete has been mindful of what he actually needs. So he hasn't asked to fill both positions until he, you know, needed it, so.
Yes, sorry.
Consistent with that, I also thought we did something with the fire marshal also, but it was dependent upon, there was an agreement that certain positions would be added when these projects first started.
So we did the same thing. We added two part-time fire inspectors. We had two part-time fire inspectors. We added two more in anticipation of these projects. The difference with the fire marshal is that when the project is done, there will still be, there actually will be an increased workload. You know, right now, they're in the inspection phase. But once these projects are all done, because they're all multi-unit dwellings, they will have to be inspected annually. Each unit has to be inspected annually. So once the construction is done and we hit that, then we'll need to determine, is the four-part-time inspector model the best? Should we go for a third full-time and eliminate the part-times? You know, we'll have to have that discussion when that, when we get to.
Yeah, I want to mention that. But I do want to go to another thing. I know that over the last couple of years, based upon the information that we have all been given of what our anticipation has been on building progress, we have been recording certain revenue. Because shovel had not hit the ground as was anticipated, we, I believe, have been, we've been short on our revenue in this area. So only because of the past, how comfortable are we to record it now for next year? You know, is there, you know, this is one of the areas where I might be a little bit more conservative in our revenue.
Yes.
And if we ended up that they come in there, then that's fine. I mean, it's just going to flow into the general fund. But it doesn't, it, it may make more sense simply because, you know, we're relying on other outside parties sometimes to do some of this stuff. So I, I'm just raising that for the board to discuss and consider.
I would say, you know, we're more comfortable with where things are now because demolition has started. Permits have been applied for and have been granted. But that's one of the balancing things that the board of finance needs to look at is, you know, do we try and, you know, do we try and, you know, make some adjustments in the mill rate calculation knowing that we feel comfortable that this building permit revenue is going to come in? Or do we leave the fudge, fudge factor in, in the mill rate? Or do we reduce the amount we anticipate from building permits? That's something that they really need to balance when they're, got the whole budget in front of them and deciding where to go with the, the mill rate and revenues.
I know John isn't here, but when John spoke to the Board of Education on the Board of Finance report talking about their budget, one of the things he was talking about is rightsizing to make sure that the revenues are proper where, you know, if we have to, as an example, reduce a hundred thousand dollars in town clerk or three hundred thousand in this, that we do that. And then, you know, the offset to keep the mill rate the same is, as David mentioned, there is some funds potential and that this is all their determination. But definitely the general fund fund could offset any mill rate increase. And the advantage is, is that if it does come to fruition and we make the 1.9 million, it's just going to flow right back into the general fund at the end of the year anyway. So it would be there. But I just, I just have a hesitation based upon that we've been relying on information, best estimates have been made on that.
I think that's what I would say is, you know, the staff does the best job they can with estimating revenues based on the information they've been given from the developers. So, you know, I feel confident that we should continue that practice.
No, I, I agree, but this is one that, based upon the history, is one that I thought might be discussed with the board of finance.
We're not going to give them any fees.
Are we going to meet our target this year? What's your estimate of us meeting the rev, building permit revenue target for nineteen-twenty?
They don't expect to meet that. Their base permit revenue is about, in the budget this year is about 1.2 million dollars. They do it on a three-year average. They expect that to be low from what Pete has said. He's just not seeing the same volume on normal permit activity. And then so far, we've only taken in very minimal on the demolition permits.
Okay.
And they budgeted about seven-hundred fifty thousand for the development projects.
I'm, just another question, follow-up. When they demolish a building, is that going to have for a period of time a reduction on the grand list?
Yes, yes.
Because if it doesn't exist?
Yes.
Yes.
Do they keep the land value in?
Yes.
Okay, anything else on building? All right. Moving on. To, are we going to human service?
Tab nine.
Yep.
All right, so under human services, human services is first. There is not much of a change there. They are asking for additional hours for their part-time employees. They work minimal hours, but they provide support for the office. In the health department and the human services department, chair, one full-time administrator. So one of the functions of the, the part-time employees in the human services department is that they cover when the full-time employee is not there. But they're anticipating an uptick in their client base with the opening of the Royal. So they feel they need the additional staff hours to support them. So these part-time people actually support our social workers.
I would imagine we'll see kind of a sustained uptick also as we add multifamily units with the twelve percent affordable component.
Yes, I would expect that as well. The second part of that budget is the essential needs payments. And, you know, these are things that, you know, clients of the department have a need for, you know, say, a deposit on a rent or maybe a deposit with the, with Eversource or assist with an Eversource bill. It can be things to help the kids with expenses related to schools. It's at the director's discretion. She tries to use outside funds before hitting town funds. And if you look at her on page one of forty-seven, seventy percent of the funds spent on clients come from outside donations versus the town funds. But it's, this is basically a safety net. Our residents need.
Is this also the line item where storage of eviction?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So we have a responsibility to pay for the storage of the contents of someone's home if they've been evicted? Which is, can be a very large expense sometimes.
The state law is basically the, I think it's unfair, but the property owner is only responsible to the curb. We're responsible for it from the curb. Put it in storage for a certain amount of time. Then people have the right to try and redeem it from storage. That doesn't happen very often, so then we also have to pay to have it disposed of.
Yep.
And there is, I believe, CCM is proposing legislation to change that. Because I, I don't understand why it would be the town's responsibility. But that's the law and has been for a number of years.
Been that way for a long time?
Yes.
Is eleven thousand enough?
Um, it has been. It's a difficult thing to predict.
Sure. Just curious if they're, you know, predicting an uptick in clients.
You know, the.
Yeah.
The uptick in clients won't necessarily translate into an uptick in this.
Right. These are unusual circumstances.
Yeah.
One-off.
And there are other places too. Like the community fund has some emergency money that sometimes Ally will refer them to the community fund or the community fund will give money.
Okay.
I just wanted to pick up. You mentioned that Ally and her department work with the schools in helping support the students?
Well, if you had a student, I don't know, say a kid was, I think, wasn't there an article that a kid who needed sneakers to run track or something? You know, that might be something that they might pay for out of these essential needs payments.
Okay.
But she does work with the schools.
Because the schools also have money for scholarships. Obviously, we want to make sure that she is also talking to the schools who have the money.
Absolutely, she does.
Okay.
This, this is also, and I, like, for the pumpkin, the Tony Pumpkin Fair, the PTO donated money into human services. Human services then distributed tickets so children could attend in T-shirts and that, or backpacks or other things like that that go on. So they work in conjunction with the schools, the PTOs and others. And the feedback I get is that they're very good with human organizations.
To Kate's prior point, the eleven thousand dollars only represents thirty percent of the amount of money given. Any other questions on, on the essential needs, human service? Then we'll move on to the senior center.
So there is a request in here that I support for an additional part-time employee to serve as a program assistant. This, Jen is passing out the, the request form for additional personnel. The senior center, as you know, has grown tremendously. They do a great job of programming. But one of the things that happens is because they are so busy, our senior center director Beth Harris and her assistant Marcy Rand, they don't have the time to do a lot of additional programming and planning. They don't have the time to, to go out for professional development. So this position would be part-time, would assist them in doing additional programming, would assist in covering. would assist in covering the facility when somebody's on vacation or when they want to attend outside professional development. And I think it's really important that we get them out there, enable them to go get that professional development.
It's also very problematic when one, either Marcy or Beth, is sick.
Yeah. With it, or if they're on vacation, there's, with one person covering.
Yeah.
It's very difficult.
It's not a good provider to customer ratio, if you will. And, you know, you look at the utilization, we have over 1,800 members now at the Mather Center, so.
So I support that. Other than that, it's a very stable budget. Some increase in facility repair and maintenance. That's all, you know, they provide for the kitchen equipment to be maintained, serviced. I gave you the detail on that one.
Just out of curiosity, looking at the details, does that mean that some of the equipment or the ovens or whatever are older and maybe need to be replaced? It would reduce the maintenance cost? I don't know, they're very expensive.
Yeah, not at this time. But, you know, that will come down to the road if there will be a need for that.
Under the five-year goals, there's a reference to a couple of items, and one of them popped out at me, which is two early caregiver information sessions. And I think the thing that popped into my head was, you know, being a caregiver is extremely difficult. And I wasn't, I was kind of wondering if maybe there's a way to accelerate this and do this sooner, because this makes it look like it's not going to be in that 2020, 21 timeframe.
So actually, this proposed position would allow them to do that. You know, allow them to adjust their schedules so that they could, you know, Marcy or Beth could run a program in the evening.
Okay.
You know, so they, you know, might not be there during the day, but they're running the program in the evening. You know, I think Beth really does want to offer more of that. She sees an awful lot of caregivers, people coming in, they want to move their parents into the area. They want to see what services we provide, what support we provide. And, you know, there's more and more need for that. And that kind of thing has to be in the evening. But there could also be programs offered to active seniors who, in the evenings. I think if, you know, if we gave her the resources, there's an awful lot that we could do, that we aren't doing now.
I'll speak myself. I'd be personally inclined to give her some more resources.
Yeah, and she has specific professional experience in caregiving.
Yeah.
So we should, it'd be great to be able to take advantage of that.
My question was, speaking of giving more, the senior center program revenues on page 154, line four, can you talk a little bit about that line?
Yep. We charge for some programs. We charge, well, food is in a different line item. But some programs are offered free of charge, some have nominal fees.
Do we distinguish between Darien residents and non-residents?
In terms of fees, no, we do not. Right now, the only way they distinguish is if there's a program that they expect will fill up, Darien residents have first, you know, the first opportunity to register.
Right.
But no, that's, that's been a topic of discussion a number of times.
For many years.
Yeah. They've talked about, should we have a membership fee?
Yep.
And should there be a different fee for residents versus non-residents? You know, we talked about that kind of distinction in any number of places. So far, the Commission on Aging has not been supportive of that concept. I think, you know, Beth, she's expressed it, I believe, that it seems the members are moving towards that concept, you know, that they're willing to pay, especially some of the non-residents would be willing to pay a membership fee. But I think it'd be great for the Board of Selectmen to raise that issue and suggest it.
I guess, yeah, I'd like to talk about it, maybe.
Can you remind us, as a board, the jurisdiction that the Commission on Aging has over this matter?
Less and less. I believe we took that out of the charter and took the budgeting out of their purview in the charter.
But with the idea of making a policy decision to impose a membership fee and differentiating that between residents and non-residents?
You know, I'll have to go and do a little bit of research.
Thanks.
I thought I saw you. Dan and Jen, those are questions.
Go ahead.
On that topic, at some point, it would be good to hear what amount of revenue would result from implementing that, as well as what if any fall off in users we might see. Thank you.
If I can build on that, I, a number of years ago, I know I had raised this issue. And if I'm not mistaken, one of the things that we should also investigate, because I know Kate has already done this, is what is the course of the system to manage then residents versus non-residents? Because it probably is going to be something along those lines. If I'm not mistaken, you had done something along those lines.
Well, you know, we had looked at a system that they actually with, they have a gift fund. They purchased my senior center, which I believe would allow them.
To do that, yeah. Okay.
Mark.
What constitutes membership?
What do you mean?
Like if you sign up for one program or you go to a lunch at a membership.
No, people actually sign up to be members of the senior center.
Okay. I mean, there's a form you fill out.
Yeah, with emergency contact information. All that. Any other questions?
Yeah, and, you know, the whole revenue thing there is an interesting concept. And, you know, one of my thoughts is seniors pay taxes and don't draw a lot on services. And we want to encourage them to stay. So I think that should be a factor in evaluating revenue when it comes to senior center.
My focus would be more residents versus non-residents versus anything for our residents.
Yeah. I think they've done a good job of making sure, you know, our residents get preference when it's appropriate.
Do you, I'm sorry, do you have a sense for how many non-residents are you using versus residents?
You know.
Yeah, we have that.
We do have that information. If you look at the quarterly reports, which are, if you look online at the Board of Selectmen packets, when we have the quarterly joint department head meetings, that information is in the senior center report.
Okay, moving along.
The next one up is At Home in Darien. This is basically a WASH account. We pay their employees, they get their gas at the Public Works garage, but At Home in Darien reimburses us for the cost.
We pay their employees and we pay their FICA and their...
Yes. And their workers' comp and the auto insurance.
So they're our employees?
Yes, they are legally our employees, but we are reimbursed for the cost.
No, I just want to make sure they are our employees.
Yes. It's a, you know, it can be a big nut, you know? A driver could be, is a high risk. And I'm not really a fan of those kind of arrangements. I think, you know, but that's my, just my professional bent is that we shouldn't be taking on those kind of risks for...
What kind of training do they require of their drivers?
I don't know.
Okay, but just the drivers who are under, or is it?
Just the drivers.
Just the drivers, okay.
The office staff is not.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, okay.
They're our drivers.
So they're our drivers.
I'd like for us to follow up on required trainings to make sure that it matches what we would require.
Yep.
Town hall staff.
I will say they have been very cooperative when it comes time to do employee evaluations to, you know, determine, sorry, Jen, determine wages. Next up is youth. One thing I would point out in this budget is that their fees cover basically everything except for the office staff. There's a small uptick in program expenses. It's not quite as much as they asked for, but that's a result of the cost of the programs that they offered in the summer camp. The cost of those going up. So your increases between increased costs for the seasonal temporary, when they have returning, returning counselors, they get a slightly higher rate of pay. I'm not sure what else there is to tell you about there.
This is more a question out of curiosity. Under the objectives coming here, they reference trying to leverage volunteer involvement and supportive, and supportive events, which I presume means trying to find more volunteers.
Right.
Do they talk, did they talk about how they do that? I mean, I guess the first thing that popped into my head was like trying to coordinate with like, I don't know, CDSP or something like that to find that.
They have a sign-up genius too for their...
They have.
Never mind.
It's just difficult to find.
Getting volunteers is harder now.
Oh, yeah.
Harder, harder. Yes, they have absolutely leverage.
Yeah. So there is some cost where, you know, they're having to pay for some people to assist at some of the events where, you know, years ago, they would have had volunteers.
Okay.
Any other questions about youth? Okay, moving on to public health. Wash your hands, everybody.
Mostly no.
Clear your mouth.
As with many of our departments, it is heavily personnel. The increase, I'm trying to think who the increase is for. Michelle. We have a one-union employee down there. And then we have part-time public health nurse who, the health director is asking to increase the hour sum to utilize her, to do more with the public health nurse. Travel is for the part-time inspectors who do not have a town car available to them. They have to go out and inspect the restaurants, sewer systems, et cetera.
We have At Home drive them around?
Good note. A town car owned by the town.
Great, get At Home Darien to drive them around.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah. I think they're pretty busy.
She's trying to leverage the business concept.
You know, we have the concept of getting, you know...
I think they're pretty busy, though.
I think also the drivers from the Board of Ed's side, too. We've got drivers.
Yeah. We looked at the concept of getting, having a pool car where it's not specifically assigned to any one person so that some of these part-time people could...
I like that idea.
Yeah. And so the car situation is kind of fluid with, you know, how we replace them, what we take hand-me-downs from the police department. When we get to Public Works, you know, we'll talk about that. So there may be some room to do that this year, based on some of the things that are happening, but which would then impact that budget.
I'd like to get to a place where we have a couple of fleet pool vehicles that are all EV, because these folks just drive around Darien.
Yeah. Right. And then can we leverage them in time? I just know that the Board of Ed did that. We brought in the busing, I mean, the drivers internally.
Yes, and some of the vehicles, too.
Right, the Suburbans.
Yeah. Okay, anything else for public health? All right, I think that rounds out our evening. Is there anything else we need to discuss in capital, Kate?
Yeah, so let's go to, flip to capital. I'm going to go to page 209, which is Selectmen's capital, or General Government Capital, I should say. So what we're looking at here is we maintain a renovation reserve, which is primarily for this building to do things like if we had to re-point the bricks, if we have to replace carpeting, if we have to paint offices within the building. Then we have the capital maintenance reserve, which is used for the bigger things. Some of the heating work that has been done in this building this year was done out of here. A couple of years ago, we put the ramp in the front entrance and outside, out of here. This is for the bigger need items. Jen has asked to upgrade our time and attendance system to something that integrates directly with Munis. I don't know if you want to give any more color to that.
So, wait, let's go back to the Town Hall capital maintenance reserve. You're putting an additional $50,000 in there.
Right, because one of the things, I don't know if we still show it in Public Works, Ed had asked for some funds to upgrade the heating controls. And he had done some work already this year. There are two parts of it that need to have happened. And I pushed him to go forward with some of the work this year, get it done now rather than wait until the next budget. So basically, we're replenishing what we've spent this year that he would have asked for in the budget.
Okay.
So that's why I expect next year it will drop back down to our normal funding level.
Is there a replacement or not, well, repair schedule for the stairs? I know there was a discussion about having the big stairs.
The stairs out front?
Yeah.
That kind of thing could come out of the capital maintenance.
And is there sort of like an overall level for these funds? Because this is the annual contribution, right?
Yes. When you say overall, do you mean like a level we want the budget to be at?
What's the current balance and do we have a target for the balance?
Do we have a target? I've asked Ed and Tony Campanella, our facilities manager, to put together a comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So that we can get there. I want it to be more like the vehicle replacement reserves where we know what we plan to do for the next 20 years, and we know where the ups and downs are, and we can fund it on a level basis. You know, the funding level we have now has served us well for a long time, but it hasn't been developed in a scientific way.
And the available balances for the reserve accounts are available on page 204.
Yep, we got 12 grand left in that account.
Yeah.
Probably need a little more.
So it looks like we've been pretty much spending, spending what's been allocated.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we've done some heavy spending in the last... Well, we've done some heavy spending in the last, you know, couple of years.
Can you get, just, I'm still confused, I apologize for interrupting, but the difference between the renovation reserve and the capital maintenance? Because one has a $200,000 down, and, you know, nobody's questioning the projects that have to go through, but I don't understand the difference, quite honestly.
I would say the renovation is more cosmetic kind of things.
Maybe carpets, paint.
Carpets, paint, like, you know, we still plan to redo the area outside, planning and zoning and building to make that a common area.
Right.
That kind of structural change, the, you know, the ramp that was done in the first floor, the work we did at the reception desk, those would be renovation. Capital maintenance is more systems.
So, but, Mike, in that, and I know I haven't read the back, and I thank you for preparing those sheets on the individual projects, but is there uses in addition to the $25,000 out of that $270,000 reserve?
Yes.
Okay. So I, as I said, I just have to read back there.
Well, the detail of what we plan to use is not going to be in that back there, no. But if you want us to talk, I can...
We can do it if someone has it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Time and attendance system?
The main aim of that is to, right now, we have two separate systems. Our time and attendance clock system requires maintaining employee information in Munis system payroll, as well as in the time clock system. And then we have to download, do some manipulation of the time information that comes out and upload to Munis. So what we're looking to do is use a product that's integrated with Munis, so information can flow from payroll to time and attendance and back, and maintaining just one database of employee information. Right now, we pay about $15,000 a year for our time and attendance system. Once this is implemented, it has an annual cost of about $5,000.
Yes, why would that be in capital? Why isn't that elsewhere in your budget?
Because it's not operating, it's the capital and not incurring fund, so that's going to...
Is it a software?
It is, it's a software. So it's a one-time, significant purchase.
Would the maintenance cost then come out of the...
The maintenance cost will come out of the operating budget.
Okay.
The last item on this page is our funding of the replacement, regular replacement of hardware and soft, hardware, sometimes software, but generally, this is how we upgrade the desktops, the servers. If we had to make purchase of software licenses, a one-time type thing, it would come out of here. It's based on a three-year replacement cycle for the desktops. We talked about the land use. On page 211, there is some money in there to continue to try and make Town Hall prettier. And $10,000 for cleanup of cemeteries.
That's above and beyond what's in the other budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So they asked for 30?
Yes.
10 enough?
There's never enough.
I'm not sure the 30 would be enough, really, but 10 was what I felt we could do.
Kate, on the, on the, on the overall RFC and RE budget, life-to-date budget, that means whenever the thing is first proposed...
Yeah. So some of these things, you know, Equipment Replacement Reserve, or the Town Hall Maintenance Reserve, you know, they were started in the 90s, maybe even the 80s.
Right. And do they ever, do they ever go away, and they're pulled back in?
The reserves?
Yeah.
Most of them, no.
Okay. I just thought, wasn't there something that the Board of Finance pulled in, reserves, that hadn't been used for a while?
Those were other funds.
Other funds, sorry, not here.
Right. But they do, they do regularly go through the capital projects, and if you haven't been using your money, you have to explain why.
And?
And they might take it away.
So it might disappear.
I'm going to say the reserves are probably not going to, but they, you know, I could see if they wanted to, if they felt that we had too much money in the reserves, they could reduce them.
Or if the purpose that the reserve was established for, it back goes away.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, just curious, thank you. I'm sorry.
I don't think we have any Human Service capital requests.
No.
Check.
Just keep in my deck, it's getting late, it's past my bedtime.
In prior years, we were accruing for the cost of the assessment, and I know that we ended up with $90,000 extra, and they didn't see it yet. So are we still accruing for it? Or are we using the $90,000 this year?
We don't have revow this year.
No, no, but we had, rather than spending the revow all in one year, we were taking a little bit, I thought we were taking a little bit over a four, five-year period.
So are you asking, are we, we're not ready to gear up for the next one yet?
That's what I'm asking.
I don't think we spread it over five years, as I recall.
We didn't spread it over five, yeah.
It's like a three-year, maybe, reserve that we set up, two or three years.
Okay, I wasn't sure what the time request was. Okay, thank you.
Anything else for tonight? Any board member questions on anything we heard tonight? Do you think of questions? Send them Kate's way, and we'll get answers. I have a number of questions that I noted tonight that we'll follow up on. And with that, we will reconvene tomorrow evening again at 5:30 here. And we'll be starting with Parks and Rec, moved police, library, employee benefits, risk management, and Public Works. So we've got some pretty big budget centers tomorrow night. Thank you all.